Well, seeing that the mayor's arrived and it's the appointed time of 5:30, I would like to call the Tuesday, May 26, 2020 Committee as a Whole to Order. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Mr. Clark, would you please take role?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
He's in a, this is McMiniman, he's in a sidebar. Meeting with City Council, Corporation Council, Zerco, but he'll be in any moment.
Okay. We'll mark him as present. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderman DeSenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Connelly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, acquuramus present.
All right, thank you. I'd accept the motion for approval of the May 12, 2020 Committee Meeting Minutes.
So move, Donlin.
Second.
Okay, I got a, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We have a presentation tonight, Kathy Smith.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kathy Smith, for those that you know her, she's been doing closed captioning for City Council meetings, Committee as a Whole meetings, also some of the utility meetings for 21 years, so we appreciate all she's done to make City Council meetings more accessible to those that don't have that capability. And so we do have a plaque that we are presenting to her remotely right now, but it reads, well, it has our favorite saying, Abraham Lincoln saying, it says, "Government of the people, by the people, for the people," Abraham Lincoln. In appreciation of our service, the City of Springfield commends Kathleen K. Smith for her commitment, sincerity, and dedication to our residents, neighborhoods, and community, closed captioning services from 1999 through 2020. So we really appreciate all you've done, Kathy, to keep people informed and engaged with regards to closed captioning and making City Council meetings more accessible to those that need it most. So thank you very much for what you've done over these 21 years.
Great.
Do you care to say anything, Kathy?
Well, I just want to tell you that it's been a privilege and an honor to serve the Springfield City Council for 21 years. I've had quite a few mayors, quite a few older men and women, and it's been a huge blessing for me to serve in this way. And I also want to give a shout out to Julia for integrating the state-of-the-art equipment and making sure everything's up to speed and looking into the future with everything and for all of the work she's done with technology for the people with disabilities. It's just a huge blessing to the community. And Tim and Jeanette, I'll still bake you cookies anyway.
Well, they appreciate that.
Thank you for what you do, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you all.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
All right. Any other presentations?
No. No, Chairman?
Okay. Next, we have ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. Mr. Clark?
2017, 103. 2018, 110. 2019, 008. 2019, 276. 2019, 430. 2020, 049. 2020, 067. 2020, 134. 2020, 152. 2020, 153. 2020, 158. 2020, 159. 2020, 160. 2020, 161. 2020, 162. 2020, 163. 2020, 164. 2020, 181. 2020, 195. 2020, 207.
Okay. Does anybody want to take any action on any of these tonight? Okay. All right, now for ordinances with committee consideration. Mr. Clark, you want to read, I guess, CWLP?
Yes. Thank you. CWLP, 2020, 211. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing execution of contract UW 21-03-06, residential water service materials, Core &amp; Main LP, Illinois Meter Incorporated, in a total amount not to exceed $431,048.50, the Water Division for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, Redpath.
Second.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it.
2020, 212. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 21-03-10, contract work for Shoreline Stabilization Ripton Installation for Superior Seawalls Incorporated, in amount not to exceed $182,400, the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, Redpath.
Second. Fulgenzie.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2020, 213. An ordinance approving a five-year contract extension and authorizing additional funding in amount of $3,500,000 under contract number UE 11-01, removal and beneficial use of filter plant lime materials with J. Horus Environmental Incorporated for a total amount able of $11,100,000, the Office of Public Utilities.
Do I have a motion? Move for consent.
Second. Fulgenzie.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Yes. Go ahead. Who's this? Redpath?
Yep.
Alderman, go ahead.
Doug, are you on the line?
Doug?
Anybody from City Board of Light and Power on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Nice picture.
Okay, yes.
Doug, so this contract is a five-year extension. Does this affect anything when we take down the first two power plants?
This one might be a little confusing the way, because it actually is handled by the power plant for the contract work, but it's actually the lime product from the water plant that we handle with this.
Oh, okay, okay, that's, okay, the water side, okay.
And they use this product to take to other mines, like coal mines, basically for reclamation purposes.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
And Doug, is this, this is an extension. How, has this been bid out any time lately, in the last, the last time, or was it extended then as well, or?
No, it was, the last time we went out for bids and there wasn't that much of an interest in it. It's very, it's kind of a harder product to get rid of.
Right.
And this Horus and Bush, what they did was they called around some different companies to see if they would bid, and they said no. So they did their due diligence to make sure that, that basically, Horus and, I guess it's no longer Horus and Bush, it's just J. Horus Environmental, that they would be able to still provide for the same cost. And then, and the reason they're able to deal with the product so easily is that they have all these mines around that can take it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good explanation. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Mr. Clark?
2020, 214. An ordinance approving a lease agreement with Linda Roller, doing business as Springfield KOA Campground, site number 28, located at 4320 KOA Road, Manchester, Illinois, for a one-year term for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, Redpath.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Public Works, 2020, 215. An ordinance authorizing execution of claim deed involving part of the Sixth Street Frontage Road, Wannless Lincolnwood First Edition, Fred W. Wannless, LLC.
Move for consent.
Consent.
Got a mo, do I have a second? I got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2020, 216. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bids, authorizing execution of contract number PW 21-03-03, PH Broughton &amp; Sons Incorporated, Truman L. Flat &amp; Sons Incorporated, Group Materials Incorporated, Rayhan Brothers, doing business as Sangamon Construction, and Vulcan Incorporated, doing business as Vulcan Aluminum, in amount not to exceed $850,000 for FY 2021 maintenance materials for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent, McMiniman. Okay, got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2020, 217. An ordinance accepting lowest bid responsible, authorizing execution of contract number PW 21-03-08, Complete Asphalt Services Incorporated, for the FY 2021 crack filling program in an amount not to exceed $222,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent, Donlin.
Second, DeSenzo.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2020, 218. An ordinance accepting a low bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW 21-03-02, Lincoln Lane Concrete Incorporated, Capital Ready Mix Incorporated, purchase ready mix concrete relating materials in amount not to exceed $325,000 for the Office of Public Works and the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, Redpath.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2020, 219. A resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in an amount of $56,400 may be used for Cokie Mill Road and Greenberry Road to Washington Street, Phase 1 and 2, MFT Section Number 20-00493-00-TL, the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2020, 220. An ordinance authorizing a one-year extension, RFP, with PW 20-01, with Petersburg Plumbing and Excavating, LLC, Prairie Broughton and Trucking and Excavating, Incorporated, and Rayhan Brothers, doing business as Sangamon Construction Company, for cave and repairs for an amount not to exceed $1,500,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent, McMiniman.
Second, Connelly.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, we'll go to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? I can't see everybody. They keep switching the screens around. It's driving me friggin' crazy, so.
I know, it's crazy.
They just speak up, if you would.
Yes. Director Bottom, are you on the line? Or anyone from Public Works?
I am.
Okay. Do you have any timeframe of when the Walnut Street repaving project will start? I'm getting a lot of questions on that.
We're shooting for September letting, so more than likely we'll do the traffic signal work and some of the prep work this year, and then the paving more than likely would be in the, in the spring.
Okay. Thank you.
2021.
We'd love it if it happened a little sooner. It's kind of bumpy over there.
Yeah, Tri-Hill Top Road.
Should've expected that.
I knew it. I knew it was coming. Anybody else have any unfinished business? All right, let's go to new business. I do have something I want to bring up. You know, with Phase 3 coming in, and I believe, Mayor, we're asking city employees to start coming back. I'm not sure what the dates are, but I don't think it's fair that we ask employees to come, I don't think it sends a good message that we ask employees to come back without us coming back to the chambers for meetings. As much as I like having, being able to do this, it, I didn't know, I was just throwing this out there for discussion. What everybody thinks.
Well, I think you guys ought to stay there. Joe and I got this. It's real comfortable the way it is.
I mean, Aaron, go ahead.
Thanks, Alderman Hanauer. I, I agree with you. I would like to be back and see everybody in person, but I will point out that Phase 3 only allows for meetings of 10 people, so, or less. So if we were all to come in, that would mean that we would miss our mayor and our treasurer and everyone else.
What about, I thought that that, that's except for essential businesses. We're considered an essential business.
I don't know that it says that.
I don't know. Mayor, I'll leave it up to you.
I, I will say, it would be difficult to get six, to have a six-foot distance between our chairs. I don't think our seats are six feet apart. I mean, I, again, I would like to come back in. I'd like to see everybody again, but I don't, I don't remember exactly how far apart the seats are. That was, you know, March.
Two foot.
Six feet.
Twelve foot.
No.
Kristen?
I can tell you that just because we're going into Phase 3, we are slowly going into Phase 3. All state office buildings are not opening. We're doing a phased-in approach of 50% of staff or less, masks everywhere, six feet social distancing. So, I mean, if we're going to set an example of what we're supposed to be doing, I think we should be doing it.
Yeah, that's, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, with the municipal center complex, it's kind of phased in with regards to, Nate can give the update, as far as the building's been assessed, as far as walkways, especially common areas. The elevator, you know, there'll be three people allowed to go up at a time. Masks, of course, will be required. Each workspace has been assessed as far as what you had stated, the six-foot area. If they're not able to do that, you know, they'd be required to utilize masks, and they'd only be brought in if the workload demanded that part of it. So that's where we're at, as far as that goes. It's not a total full integration, like the library, for instance. They'll do curbside pickup and drop-off beginning June 1st, and then probably more towards the middle of June. That's when we look at phasing other areas in appropriately with regards to that. So as far as council chambers, I think, actually, both individuals are correct. The city's an essential service. I think I might have put in an email, executive session would be one that we'd want people to come back in, if you are comfortable with that. And then it'd be, that's what we'd have to figure out, is the logistics of that with regards to the six-foot distancing, how that would work, and that's something we'd have to figure out, because we would like to have a executive session, probably that first meeting in June, but we'll have to work out the parameters associated with that first.
Mayor, why don't we think about going every other chair and then putting some chairs down in front or something? I mean, we could set that up.
Yeah, again, that's not required as far as the meetings themselves, so I guess we can just discuss it, throw everything out, and then we can sort through it and make a determination what people are comfortable with.
Well, I just, I don't have a, I only brought it up because, you know, I guess at some point in time, we got to make a plan to start phasing back into the chamber, you know, so I just wanted to bring it up so it's on people's radar. And whether we do it where half the council shows up one week and then the other half shows up the next week, or whatever, I don't, I don't care. You know, I'm fine doing it like this until Phase 4 hits. I don't, I don't know, so.
I like the half idea. That makes sense.
You know, but, you know, so it's, I'll, I just wanted to bring it up so everybody can kind of get their thoughts out.
Thank you.
Any other, any other new business?
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I just, actually, and Mayor, you mentioned something that I was hoping maybe we could get a little more information about with the library doing curbside pickup. Does that mean, will people be able to order books online and then come pick them up that way?
Correct. I think there's a limit of 10 books or so. There's a limit, but you'd be able to access online through the book services there.
That's wonderful news. I saw that you'd sent that information out, and I'm sure people are looking forward to having their, their books again, so thank you. Is that videos too, and music, or just books?
Well, Rochelle Hartman's on, I believe, so she could, yep. So Rochelle, if you could unmute, that would be good.
Hi, Director.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes. Did you hear my question?
Hang on just a second. All right, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, we will be starting June 1st, I believe, curbside pickup of all of our materials. You'll need to reserve them ahead of time and make an appointment to come pick them up. We'll be sending out some guidelines later this week on everything involved in that.
Wonderful. I'm looking forward to it. I've missed the library.
We've missed everybody, too.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any new business?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Nate, are you on?
I am.
Nate, I had a situation today at a house in my ward that has been going on for a couple years now. What happens is that they, they're not cleaning up their garbage. It's being, and they use four or five different cans. We've, went out, we sighed them, they, they corrected the problem. Two months later, they're back doing it again. When do we get to the point where we start hitting them with some serious fines? Because this is, this is ridiculous. And I know every alderman has a similar problem in their wards. The bottom line is, is that these people are thumbing their nose at us, and this house has been a problem house for the last couple of years for me. And the lady that lives next door has to, her bedroom is right next to their house where the, where the raccoons are in the garbage, garbage is spread all over the place. We go out, they clean it up, and then we threaten them, and then they clean things up, and then next day, they go back and they're doing it again about a week later. One time, we went out there and they had somebody cans, they couldn't get rid of it, so they dumped it, they dumped it in the garage on the floor, until we went out there and, and made them open the garage and show us all the garbage that was on the floor. I mean, this is ridiculous. We, we need to have a better system to the point where we put some serious fines on these people, and they can't get off of the fines just because they clean it up. They need to be fined, and not only the renters, but the land, the homeowners. And we need to zap these people. We need to get tougher.
Hey Chuck, real quick, I, and I'll, I was, I've been working on an ordinance that's that currently Mr. Zerco has, and I will be sending it out to everybody to get your, get everybody's input on it, but it is the graduated, the stair-step approach where the first fine is like $100, $150, second, second times two, $250, and so on, where regardless of whether they abate it, if we come out, they're going to get a fine, just if we, for things like this. It's also for lawn mowing, where I have a terrible problem, as everybody does lately, with people purposely not mowing their lawn. I mean, and it's ridiculous that we're sending staff out and they, they, as long as they mow it, by the time their, you know, their case comes up, they're, they're all right, they don't get a fine.
But here, but here's the problem, Ralph and the rest of the council, you all, you all get it, because you all got the same problems, we all do. But the bottom line is, is that we can fine the renters all we want, but we're never going to get anywhere unless we put it on the owners of the property. We got to, we got to hit them double as hard. We got to, the renter needs to be fined, and whoever owns the property needs to be fined, and it could never go backwards. And if they graduate from a $250 fine, the next time, no matter what, they should be getting a $500 or a $1,000. And then if we get to the point where we have to put a lien on their house, we need to do it. We need to stop playing games with these people. It's, it's really getting monotonous, and I know everybody's got the same problem, so I'm preaching to the choir, but it's frustrating. And this lady has to smell that garbage, the hotter it gets, she can't open her windows because of the garbage. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. So, thank you.
Well, I hope, I hope that, and I'm hoping to get something out to you guys. I talked to Mr. Zerco today, and hopefully we can get something out. I'd like to get it on first reading next, for next week, if possible.
Well, let me, let me make something real clear. Nate Bottom's team is doing a great job handling this, but they, but once they, they have to keep going through the process. You know, I talked to Daryl Harris today, and he's, he knows these people personally. He goes, he drove by there today and took pictures of the stuff, and so that's stuff they're going to bring to Corporation Council, but we need to, we need to put teeth in this stuff. We need to get me.
Corporation Council, is there a way that we can, can you get, can we get this ordinance going so that we can, we can move forward, first reading on Tuesday?
I believe that that is possible. We did an initial draft, and then we made those revisions.
Right.
Alderman, that you'd ask about, about the graduated penalty, so it should be available to circulate tomorrow, if that's convenient for you, and I'll, I'll send it to you, and then you can decide.
All right, I'll send it out to everybody and ask for input as soon as possible, so we can get it back to Corporation Council. We'll get it out on the first reading, hope, you know, first reading on Tuesday.
Thank you. Thank you.
Then it'll hit.
I have a question.
Let's see, Aaron was first, then John.
Thank you. Thank, I, I just wanted to say, I think, obviously, I, I got a little busy in, in March and April, but I've also been working on looking at some ways to modify our ordinances to include, and I think Alderman Hanauer, we were on the same, same path with that health, life, safety added, added kick to the penalties, so I'll, I'll wait to see what you've got, and then maybe it's something I could add an amendment to.
Yeah, mine's, mine's more dealing with the, the garbage, with the, with the garbage and the lawn and things like that, so.
Yeah, and obviously, mine comes from, you know, I'm not going to say the rat house, but the rat house, the rat situation. But I think, you know, what Alderman Redpath is talking about would, would absolutely fall under a health, life, safety type of, of a situation, where you have someone who's, I mean, if your environment is being, is being impacted this negatively by garbage, that's, that should trigger a higher penalty immediately also. So I will wait to see what yours, when yours comes out. I'll look for that tomorrow or Thursday.
I think this is going to be a pretty simple amendment to the original one, so we just got to get this out, at least for, for the, the garbage.
Lawn mowing, yeah.
And then, and then if you want to go like the rats and things like that, I think that's, that's step two in this, so.
Well, and this one, the approach I was, I'm trying to, I would like to do is just to include that concept that, you know, there are certain penalties. Yeah, if we get called out and you just refuse to mow your grass, then you get something, but there should be a graduated approach also in terms of the, the, the impact of it. I mean, I think, I think garbage falls, especially garbage piling up right next to your, your neighbor's house, falls under a health, life, safety type of situation. So, but that's, I'm glad, I'm glad you've got something coming, and I look forward to it, and I'll, I'll give you a call.[1677.21]
This is McMenamin. I've got comments on the same topic. If Alderman Phil Genzi wants to go first, that's fine.
Well, I've got John, and I've got Alderman Gregory, and then you can go, Joe.
Thank you.
The thing of it is, I think it's a good idea to fine the tenants, but a lot of times, the owners aren't around when these guys do it. And I think it ought to be on, on the tenant for maybe one or two of them. And then pretty soon, the owner's going to have to victim, get rid of them. But it's not something the owner can do right away, and I think the tenant should be responsible.
But that's part of the problem. We've had these absentee landlords that don't take care of their property.
You don't have to be absentee to not notice that something's going on over there.
But shouldn't they have to, like, take responsibility for their property? Like, shouldn't they hold me, shouldn't they hold me accountable to keep their property nice? The homes that, uh.
You know, if somebody dumps garbage in a garage.
Let's, let's, one at a time.
If somebody dumps garbage in a garage and closes the door, how does the owner know that?
He will once he starts getting fines.
Yeah.
So the point that I was making, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, Sean.
The point that I was making is, is, is all about accountability. And, and, and we've, you know, over my particular ward, we used to have what was called the John Hayhoms, a pretty rough area, same makeup for people, but it's redone. And guess what? The Springfield Housing Authority is not playing. They, they hold their tenants accountable, and that's part of the things that we need. The new owners in Lake Victoria, I'm very happy with them. I had a great conversation with them today, and, and they are holding people accountable. I'm held accountable for the house that I rent. If I don't cut my grass.
That's not what we're talking about.
I'm just saying that, that at times, people are not around to really notice their houses. And if the city is letting them know that, hey, we're having this problem, then they could kick down to their landlords and like, or to their tenants to say, we expect this to stay nice.
I agree with that. Well, and here's the other thing, too, in the case of lawn mowing, okay? Whose responsibility is it? In some leases, it's the, it's the owners. In other, other cases, it's the, it's the tenants. I don't care who is, who's responsible for it. It needs to get done, and it can't. What I've seen a lot, and it happens out here, I just had a case where, where if the landlord's responsible for it, they're mowing it once a month, and that's not acceptable. It's just not acceptable. And. I agree with that. And, and, you know, I, I've been on a tear lately because I've been driving around, and I've been sending properties in that have, have grass that are, that's knee high. And then we have to get involved, and we, we shouldn't have to do that. And the frustrating thing is, I don't want people to get fined, but that's the only way we're going to make people start doing it. Now, I like Alderman Redpath's angle where you fine both of them. At least they know, both of them know that it's not acceptable. I don't know how we incorporate that and how legal it is. That's up to Corporate Counsel. But, but it is a, it is an interesting concept. But, and I saw Kristen's hand up, go ahead.
Don't forget, your friend W7.
I'm sorry, Nate, I'm sorry, Joe.
Joe first.
I'm sorry, forgot.
Well, this is another real good discussion regarding these flagrant and serial offenders that are out there. And we got them in all the wards, and oftentimes, more often in the older wards. And we need teeth, like we're all talking about, and so many of these approaches are worth pursuing. Let's not forget the, the teeth we added four years ago. Alderman Proctor and several of us were co-sponsors of the three strikes and you're out type of approach. I think Alderman Turner, you're a co-sponsor, I was. And basically, it says that if, if a property tenant or owner has three violations due to three separate inspections within 24 months, they will face a fine. There's no remediation escape clause for that type of situation. That was a really good ordinance. I think we need a better way to enforce it. I know I'm calling in some locations where I thought I've called them in, you know, once or twice or three times in the past. And, but you can't go online to see whether that's a fact. You have to rely upon Public Works, which is a big, you know, responsibility, additional burden for them. But ultimately, we need to get these violations online so the neighborhood associations can track them, and so that we can use the teeth that we've already got. So basically, that Alderman Proctor's ordinance said that if you've got three viol, you know, on three separate inspection dates within 24 months, and it doesn't have to be the same violation. It could be garbage on one, and tall weeds on a, on a second, and, you know, a dangerous, something dangerous on the property in a third. You can fine them, you know, that's, and we got to use it and get the word out there. So that's, I think we're heading in the right direction here with all the different remedies we're talking about.
Kristen?
Well, maybe we amend it, thank you Chair. Maybe we amend it to 12 months, because 24 months seems to be too long. I have several frequent flyers.
I like that.
And my, my latest case is someone who is impersonating a Springfield firefighter, and he is a slumlord that doesn't feel the need to provide garbage service to his tenants, doesn't keep the lawn mowed. We tracked down, you know, the name he's using this week, and we've actually submitted it to the Springfield Police Department.
Where'd you put the milk?
I didn't put the milk anywhere.
Mute please.
But I don't, I don't think, I think 24 months is too generous. I mean, we are getting the same calls over and over and over. It's enough.
Well, I think that when, it, once we go to where they're getting fined, when, when we come out, they get fined, I think you're going to see some of that in because what, they know the game. They, they all know, they know, all they have to do is fix the problem before they go to admin court, and they're, nothing happens. So now, they get fined, that's gonna, that's gonna put some, you know, that'll, that'll get their attention. And the more they get fined, that, you know, if they get fined $150 the first time, let's say, and then $250 the next time, and then $500 the third time, that's some money. They're not going to like it. And, you know, so I just.
I think the fines are too light.
As soon as I get this out, as soon as I get this, this thing, I'll get it to you guys, and then we'll take, take recommendations, so.
Doris is up.
The what?
Doris wants to speak.
Doris, I'm sorry, I don't even see you on my screen.
Oh, wow.
Well, they got my screen all jacked up. I can't, I can't tell who's gone and who's not.
Go to gallery.
No, I, I guess, I just want to say that I totally agree with the, with the comments that everyone has made. We have, everyone has these problems in their, in their wards, and all of it, you know, as soon as it starts getting warm, you're going to get calls from you-know-who about their neighbors and not being able to go out and, and all of these, all of these things. And, you know, I also, we need to keep in mind that, as a city council, we have voted to spend a lot of money and, and put in a lot of time with regard to neighborhood revitalization. And all of this goes hand in hand. We cannot look to revitalize our inner-city older neighborhoods and move that forward if we continue to let landlords and renters not be held accountable. And I totally agree that we have to hold, landlords have to be held accountable for their rental property. Fortunately, when you have people that will purchase a property at a very low end, and they go in and they smack a little bit of paint here and there, and then, you know, they, they rent it out to make, you know, a quick buck, and that's fine, I mean, you know, that's free enterprise, but they have to be held accountable. And, you know, I know that landlords come in all the time and complain about, you know, they can't afford to do this and that about upkeeping other property. Well, that's the business that you chose. So if you can't afford to keep your property up, and if you can't afford to do what you need to do to ensure that you have quality renters, then maybe you shouldn't be in that business.
Anyone else?
Ralph?
Yes.
Ralph? Hey, really quick on that ordinance we put together three years ago regarding the timeframes, the 24 months versus 12 months. It might seem backwards, but when we, I initially wanted to do 12 months, but the, the problem was every time you went past that, you know, the 13th mark, you only had two violations, you kind of reset the clock. And so we made it 24 months, and so we had, you know, three times in a 24-month period. So if you shortened it, it would be, we found it probably less effective, and so that's why we said 24 months. And Ralph, I'd be open to looking at your language and amending it because, yeah, we, we ran into the trap that every time somebody got cited, they'd go to administrative court and show evidence that they got it fixed, and they're like, okay, I'm done now. And it's just a vicious cycle that kept going over and over again. So I'd be open to working with you to try to create a tiered structure so if violation, you're paying no matter what, that you get it, and it's just going to keep going up. So I'd like to see your language.
Yeah, as soon as I get it from, from Mr. Zirkel, I'll, I'll get it out to everybody. I'll have Tim send it out to everybody and collect your, your, any, any changes or, you know, questions or concerns.
George?
You're on mute.
I'm mute.
Oh.
Dog was barking. Is it possible to look at, look at the language and, and add in that the, the resident as well as the owner of the property would be notified? So that, that takes out that I didn't know situation.
I'll leave that up to Mr. Zirkel.
You see what I'm, you understand what I'm saying?
You know what? I think it's important that we get this up on the floor just so we can do those changes because everybody's got a little bit that they want to contribute. I think it's a good idea that everybody talk this around because, and back to John. John, this was not a shot at, at landowners. It's because that they're not notified. And if, we'll, we'll do a progressive discipline type of thing where we start off, they get notification. Once we know that the landowner's notified, then they're going to be eligible for fines if they don't take action with their tenants. I think we got to make it a progressive discipline situation, but we got to stay solid and not allow these people to come into the court, administrative court, and then they say, well, cleaned it up, okay, you're good. No, you're going to get a fine. If you have to come here, bring your checkbook.
Yeah, so that's why I think it's important if we can, if we add that both the, the property owner and the tenant are notified.
I agree, Doris. Thank you.
John?
I just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, no, no, hold on, Sean. John, John Phil Genzi had his hand up first, didn't you? Sorry, buddy.
No problem.
I think that they ought to both be notified, but on the first offense, I don't think the landlord ought to be held accountable. I think the, the tenant should be first, and then if it goes on, the landlord should be held accountable. I don't think it's fair the first time out that they're both fined.
John, that's why I said progressive discipline. We, what I mean by that is give them a notification, both of them. Once they're notified, if it continues, then the landlord's going to subject himself to a fine. And, and so I'm all forgiving them fine. I'm all forgiving them a chance, but too many times, it goes backwards.
Sean, you're next.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Zirkel, I don't know if the ordinance that, that I had you working on or that you was working on, you and your staff, would, would be something that, that we can, just to let the rest of the council know, I did speak to some, I do have a ordinance similar where it is, is, is going to help us when we do go out to cite, particularly, you know, in my ward, what I see a lot of is, is garbage and things. And when we go cite them, there is a potential for that person that we're citing just have that stuff haul to the next alley and just dump it all over again. So now we're working towards, you know, making sure that they provide proof when we go cite them that they have disposed of the garbage and whatever we're saying needs to be removed properly, instead of just, just believing that. You know, as well as I talked to Public Works, just about our, our small haulers, people who do side jobs and things of that nature, and permits, and I learned that that permitting process has moved over to the county. You know, I would like to work with our, our local, I think that's something that we need to work on because we have a lot of, a lot of that going on throughout our whole city, where people are going to clean out garages and different projects, and, and they're, they're not paying the $100 to go dump it. You know, they're not even charged enough to, 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 to pay for that, and they're just finding a spot. A lot of the times, unfortunately, over on the east side, and they're just dumping this. I mean, you know, I, I echo your comments, Alderman Redpath, is our Public Works guys are working very hard. I, I just actually talked to, you know, Mr. Harris about that, about how hard they were working, and I feel bad for how many emails I have to send them about stuff in the ward. And, and that, that I'm trying to, you know, along with all of you, you know, go to the policy level to try to help them out. So I, I really appreciate it.
Aaron?
Thank you, Chair. And I actually have a question for Alderman Redpath. I, I guess if we're, if we're looking at including owners, then notifications, I guess for the group, does this then naturally kind of lead into we'll, we'll also need a registration system for property owners?
I'm not for a registration system because I don't think that that helps any, this at all.
I guess I just, I want to make sure that if we move forward with something like this, that we get feedback from Public Works so that we make sure that we aren't putting too much additional work on, on, on their desks when it comes to, you know, now you not only have to notify the, who's in the property, but you have to make sure that who's in the property owns it, and if they don't, that they then have to be notified. So I, I just think we need to keep that in our, in our heads as we, as we move forward with this. Because of all of our departments, I know that Public Works is, is very busy, and I want to make sure that we're giving our inspectors effective tools that actually do the job that we want them to do, instead of giving them more busy work to do. Or if we're giving them more busy work, maybe we need to make sure they have someone in there on staff who can help with that busy work. So just, just some thoughts about an ordinance we haven't seen yet.
Mr. Chair, just a brief comment of information. Our, our violation notices now go to the property owners. That's where they go. And our inspectors don't search for tenants. They search for property ownership. And then it's the responsibility of the property owner to put pressure on the tenant. That's the current structure of the way it is.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll get this out to you guys when, as soon as I can get it from Mr. Zirkel. Sean?
All right, one final thing I just want to talk about, because I know we are trying to get out of here. But, Mr. Mayor, if I may, have we made any gain or, or progress on my question last week on, I know you had referred me to Mr. Zirkel, and I was eagerly awaiting an email on what we were going to do about the situations that, that are going on in our, in our police department. And I have not received that, so I would, you know, you know, I've, I've, I feel the calls all weekend long about, you know, just some, just some feelings of unequal application of the law with, with some of these black parties and, and, and with what we got going on downtown and at BOS and, you know, and, and, and I try to, you know, give the answers that I'm giving when I, when I come to council and when I talk to you and the chief. And, you know, one of the things that, that was brought to my attention was, Sean, the BOS center is not capital property. So that, the, the, the excuse that you gave, you know, it doesn't work. It's not BOS property. So what's, what's your excuse now? And I had nothing. So, you know, I, I, I've just been pondering and, you know, hoping that I would get some response on, on what you, what you are thinking because, you know, this is, we're seeing this all over the country, and, you know, we just had a nasty, nasty message sent to every black person in Springfield out at Centennial Park. A very nasty word that I didn't appreciate at all. And I know that, that anyone of color and not color, that, that just are not a fan of, of those type of words were highly offended throughout the city. But yet, all we have heard about is, you know, the few light issues that happen over here in this community. But there was no outrage, and I'm, I'm not pointing any fingers to anybody about those vicious words and vandalism of that nature, you know, in, in our parks throughout our city. You know, I, I, I definitely think that it's important, you know, and, 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 you know, I talked to everybody, and I said, you know, I, I feel that all types of media calls today, and I told them all that what I had to say tonight was, 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 I, I wanted to say it here first before I commented publicly or on Facebook or anything about it. But I hope that, that we can take a strong stance to whatever was needed as far as training or, you know, I'm still interested in, in, in finding out exactly what's going on. I know we got to go into executive session. I know, I know I'll have to work with Corporation Council and the police chief to get some records that I would like to review myself. And, you know, I, it, it just seems like sometimes, man, I got to get, I got to go, you know, call Teresa and then LAACP or, or do you, Kentage and ACLU and, you know, or, or call the Justice Department or, or whatever to, to have them come look into these situations. And, you know, I, I, I think you, you are a better leader than that. I, I think, I think you're stronger than that. So I thought I deserved, you deserve for me to, you know, publicly ask you, what are we going to do about this, and what are the plans about it, before I allow anybody to do anything else or that I take other options under consideration myself? So I just, I just, you know, as a man, you know, and, and I like you, I have great respect for you. Chief, I would never wade back. I was, man, I wasn't even in politics, and I came and I stood up for chief because he does an excellent job, in my opinion. I was surprised when I, you know, read a report that a high percentage disapprove of him. I think that points out a, a issue that, that we need to keep getting. So, you know, I, I, I just, you know, I want to be a man, and, you know, these is tough conversations. And, and let me say this, it's a tough conversation for me to have because, quite frankly, the last time that I had an issue with the police while in office, after that, I get stopped, I got picked on a little bit. So I, I'm saying that, that it's hard for me to, to come out because I want everybody to understand that this is not about police or anything like that. This is about right and wrong. I just had a great conversation with our NPO about improvements in my ward. He's a bright young man. He's a white kid. He's doing a great, fantastic job. The officer that I had the issue with is a great officer because he sat down and we talked like men, and I gave him a, a, a view, a vision of how, why I felt that way and, you know, why our interaction went that way. He received that so well that it helped me because when I got stopped the next time, just three weeks later, a day after my. He received that so well that it helped me because when I got stopped the next time, just three weeks later, a day after my birthday, we had been in here until 12 o'clock at this council. I was fully suited coming from a meeting. But because of my conversation, of my interaction with that officer, that I learned from it, I didn't have that same interaction with the next officer. So it helped me. So what, what I'm saying to you is that, you know, I, 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 I live this, man, and we do have a problem. And, man, you gotta take a stand. You gotta help me. You gotta help my community get better. You gotta help our officers get better because we, if we got 276, there's obviously, um, 275 guys doing the right, but somebody in there is doing the wrong.
Yeah, the Chief can speak to the rank and file. You brought up a lot of items there, uh, you know, with regards to executive session. That'll be coming up. Uh, but with regards to the rank and file, you know, I, the, I told the chief, the only one that really, I mean, I don't get hung up on the confidence vote. I think people put Chief Winslow in a difficult situation that he shouldn't be put into. I think, uh, anytime you have to choose sides, that's not right. It's all about the community. So, uh, that's really goes to the core of anything with your regards to protest. I think he's answered it. I think it's a legal issue with regards to protests at the Capitol or Bank of Springfield Center, or if it's in the middle of the street. Uh, that's different from a gathering of, you know, like a block party or anything of that nature. So it goes to the freedom of speech. It goes to the, uh, wearing of the mask. I mean, I, you know, I hear that all the time. Well, it's my right not to wear a mask. No, it's your right to make sure you don't infect everybody. I mean, that, I think people have it upside down. I think they don't understand, and that's what needs to be reinforced, is that the, uh, to work together. And I think that's what you're bringing up. How do we work together through these things? I, you know, when I first took office, what we heard is enough talk, enough talk, let's get action. And so that's why you've, uh, you know, we put processes in place. Uh, Chief Winslow's done a great job with regards to diversity, but it goes beyond that because all it takes is one person. Just like the coronavirus, not to draw the correlation, but the coronavirus can infect a lot, a lot of people. And that's, uh, culture can be infected by one person and it, it runs the gamut. So, uh, you know, so that's a broad spectrum. How do we get past that from a cultural, uh, standpoint? I think, uh, the coronavirus has brought out the best of people. I think it's brought out the worst of people. Uh, but you're right. How do we, uh, work past that? But a couple of things. One is if there is anybody that thinks they were, um, duly or unfairly treated, especially with government operations, if it comes to me and you want true transparency, I, that's what the inspector general's for. Turn it right over to them. That's what we, uh, do on a regular basis. And that really helps because you have that unbiased viewpoint and they look at, uh, the criteria accordingly, uh, associated with that. It doesn't matter of what it's pertaining to, in my estimation. But you do have, uh, situations that do get in, uh, with regards to that. But I think there'll be some clarity through the executive session. I think Chief Winslow can add some clarity. I think, uh, Corporation Counsel might be able to add some clarity. But really, it's the community, especially as we move forward. Uh, how do we, uh, make our community stronger? Because the protesters have come out. I think, uh, some of that's come from that, and, uh, they're not necessarily all from our area. Uh, and that's with any type of movement. You get people from the outside coming in, and we're a capital city. So that's a perfect target for someone to want to, uh, raise the ire or raise the awareness or raise their, uh, point of view. Uh, but, uh, that's, you know, a challenge to all of us to how do we work together through these issues? Because the bottom line is, uh, with businesses starting to open up, how do we, uh, really, uh, improve the lives of each person in our community? And that's really the challenge, uh, before all of us associated with that. But Chief Winslow, I don't know if you have anything you want to add with regards to what was brought up?
Chief?
Yeah. So basically, as far as like the protest, we've been over this, whether it's the legislator at the B O S center or at the Capitol, the, this is a right to protest. And we've talked to our legal folks and we've been advised that people have the right to protest. And we're gonna just maintain the public safety, let them exercise their right. This is different from the block parties that we dealt with over the weekend where people were doing pop of block parties in middle residential neighborhoods or in business parking lots at 1:30, 2:00 in the morning. We've seen how that's happened in the past and how that's dealt out. We know that there's a tendency for them to sometimes turn violent. We've lost five of these kind of parties. And it's something that we've taken basically a stance of trying to disperse and, and to, uh, uh, to get rid of, you know, so it doesn't disturb the neighborhoods. And, uh, you know, those people who are trying to live in peace in their neighborhoods have a right to that. And this has been an ongoing problem over the years. They come in the summertime. We know they're gonna come. They came this weekend. We dealt with several of them. Uh, it's different from a protest, and I don't know how else to explain people than it is.
Hold on, Sean.
Well, let me say, I, I'm sorry.
Let him finish. Let him finish.
It, it, it's just different, okay? So, uh, whether somebody wants to block down the middle of the roads and, you know, at, at 5:00 in the afternoon for a protest, obviously, we have to weigh the, what's there, okay? Is this, how do we handle this best? How do we get them to where they need to go, point A to point B safely? Get them out of the road and open everything back up. This is different than from people parking in the middle of the road, getting out, partying, you know, drinking, doing whatever they're gonna do, you know, and turning into something like that. They're just two totally different things. I don't know how else to explain it. I've answered that question probably 50 times over the last month, and some people just don't like the answer. And it is what it is. As far as, as far as any issues in the police department, I look forward to the executive session where we can explain to you what the police department has done. My staff has taken each one of these incidents and dealt with each one of these incidents appropriately and effectively. And we're moving forward, you know? We've held those accountable that we've been able to. And, uh, you know, up to and including termination, as I discussed at the other executive session. So, uh, I'll be more than happy to lay it all out there for you guys next week if that's when we're gonna do it.
All right. Kristin, you were up first. Your hand was up.
I'll give it to Sean.
Sean?
Well, I just wanted to make just one, one final comment, Chief. I, 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 I think you know that, that, that I, I fully support not having these situations in the middle of the net. But when it, when it happened, when I first came in office, I was the first person against, you know, people that I know and hung with all my life. And I, and I, and I stood with you all because the officer got hurt on, 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 on how I didn't like this. Um, um, you know, when that happened, I, I don't particularly like this going on. But I think our approach sometimes to these situations, especially right now, is, 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 is too, uh, uh, you, we, we like to say they're unique, but they're, they're relatively the same. Both parties are, are, are doing things that, um, are ordinance violations or against the law. Both parties are. The, uh, uh, the people at the B O S center, okay, they, they say, oh, just let them do it. But that doesn't mean that we have to let them walk in the streets. That doesn't mean that they get to argue with us and tell us what they're not gonna do. Because I know for sure if we say that over there at that little block party, it's going down. So that's all I'm saying is equal, equal application of the law. I'm not saying that, that you guys are, our, our, our officers are wrong for, 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 uh, making this thing move along. But have we ever tried to, 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 to come and, 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 and block it off and keep them safe? You know, the feeling that, in my community is right now? The feeling that my community is, well, dang, they will, that our police officers will come and, and, uh, block off the streets for people who ain't even from Springfield, Illinois? And, 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 and make us go home. I, I, and I get it. They do need to go home. But, I mean, they're, they're rebellion against the, the, the stay-at-home order like anybody else. They're trying to stay out. They're doing things that, that they're not supposed to like anybody else. And we just want to see the law apply equally. Um, um, you know, I know some of the things that do happen at, a, a, a 18-year-old kid can be out at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning as long as they're not causing any problems and, and distracting and, uh, uh, disturbing anybody with the call-ins. And, and I think we have to deal with that case-by-case issue, just like we have to do for the case-by-case issue with the protests. At least we can, we can try to put some pressure to people who are doing disrespectful things, holding up Nazi signs and things like that. At least we can tell them that they have to go. At least that. That's all I'm.
Alderman, I totally understand where you're coming from, and I respect your opinion. Obviously, I'd be happy to talk to you more offline about, off-line about this. But with this, you know, when it comes to the freedom of speech stuff, believe me, we have asked for as much guidance as we can possibly get on these things. And, uh, you know, I was shocked to learn that the state was gonna allow protesters in the B O S center. And the old state police handled that protest over there, and we assisted with the outside of it. Uh, again, it goes right back to people's right, their constitutional rights. And, um, you know, again, we can talk more offline off this, and no one approves of the, the negative, the negative speech and the, uh, the position that some of the folks in the crowd take. But again, you know, uh, it's, it's a total different form. It's a total different thing. It's not 1:30, 2:00 in the morning. They're just, they're just different. And I don't know how else to explain that, but we can talk more offline about them.
Yep.
Okay. Kristin, you're up next.
Thank you, Chair. It's, you can say it's different, but it's not different. I mean, I guess, Sean, you should tell these folks to go have a party, uh, on the Capitol stairs, um, at 2:00 in the morning because they're gonna get a police escort and maybe a march through downtown if they want. Um, because, I, I mean, the, the double standard is, is, is horrifying. I, I understand that, you know, there's a, uh, one is a protest and, um, but the other's a protest in its, in its own way. It might be late at night, um, on the east side of town, so it's a little more unsavory. But they're, they're, they're protesting their right to, to do what they want as well. And, you know, I, I just, I, I'm very uncomfortable with how this is all being handled, and I'm just gonna leave it there.
Doris? You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Dang, dog.
Sorry. I know. Um, I, I want to thank Sean for bringing this up again this week. Um, you guys know I went into the same type of detail last week about these situations. And then, you know, we had another, something else very similar that happened over the weekend. And, and, you know, we can look at this, it doesn't happen in isolation. You have crowds of people, since we've been doing this stay-at-home order, you've had crowds of people in Washington Park. You've had crowds of people and, um, at house parties, graduation parties, all of those kinds of things. And I know that it's, uh, complaint-driven, but I know that people have called and complained. And a, an officer doesn't even show up, nothing. And then I got, I don't know how many calls, uh, from people who on Easter Sunday were having family gatherings, and they had officers show up at their house and, and tell people that they had to leave. So throughout this entire stay-at-home order, we have had police officers on the east, on the east side of Springfield coming to our homes and telling, uh, people that they had to disperse, they had to leave. And, and we're not seeing that same thing happen throughout the entire community. I mean, o- over the weekend, there was a, a big party at, at the Curve Inn. You know, people partying and ha- and having a good time. And, and, you know, we hear crickets. And so, you know, just like I said last week, it's, it makes it very difficult for, not only for me, but for all of us to try to explain this. It, it makes it extremely, extremely difficult. And I think that we cannot continue to, in one breath, hold ourselves up as, you know, the, the city of Abraham Lincoln and, and, you know, and everything that that stands for, but not stand up and, and take a stand when, when this type of, of inequity is, is going on. I mean, you know, and then back to the situation that happened out at Centennial Park. Everybody knew that that happened, and I did not hear one person say publicly that it was wrong. The only thing I heard was, oh, yeah, we, oh, yeah, we, we cleaned it up. Oh, yeah, people are stupid. You know, but nobody said it's wrong. So un- until people stand up and, and publicly take a stand and say that this, this is wrong and it will not be tolerated, we're gonna continue to have it. And, you know, and I know that, you know, I, I'll get people that will call, call me and say, yeah, you know, you're right. But calling me and saying that I'm right is very different than publicly saying, yes, yes, you're right. This is wrong, and we need to figure out how we stop it.
Okay. Erin, you're la- I'll give you the last word. Well, I'll let Chief, Chief or the mayor get the last word, but go ahead, Erin.
Thank you. And I'll keep this brief. And I, I just wanna, um, I just want to thank Alderman Gregory for bringing this up again. I, I think we, we all have an obligation to speak when we see things that, that are unfair and unjust. And, um, you know, and Chief, I, I understand your position, um, that, that it is difficult. We do have a freedom of speech in the, in this country. And, and one of, one of the main tenets of our government is, is dissent. Um, that's why, you know, I, I listen to people I don't, who don't agree with me. I, I, I welcome people coming to me and, and not agreeing with me. Um, but I do try to encourage, you know, I do try to put out the fact that it needs to be done in a respectful manner. And Mayor, you, you touch on that all the time, that respect is, is part of this. Um, I, I think the one thing, and I, I, I'm not gonna advocate for these late-night, um, block parties because Alderman Gregory, I, you have been very clear and very consistent and firm in your opposition to those. And, but I will point out, um, that in addition to our right to free speech and, and the, the dissent, we have a right to assembly. And these rights that are granted to us by the Constitution have modifications to them. So with Alderman Gregory's situation, sure, you have a right to assembly in, in this country. We are free to do that. But you're not free to do that at 2:00 in the morning when you're waking up people and creating a disturbance of the peace. Um, Chief, I think probably one of the bigger concerns, and, and again, I know you've explained this, and I'm not, I'm not questioning or trying to beat you over the head with your explanation. The concern was seeing these protesters walking in the middle of the street with a police escort. Um, if, if people want to protest and they've not gotten a permit, they've not cleared this with, with you ahead of time, I'd like to see them on the sidewalks. We have good sidewalks downtown. I mean, I'm very proud of the work that we've done on our sidewalks downtown. Those people can stay on those sidewalks because that's still their right to speech. That's still their right to dissent. But you do it within the norms of, of society where you don't take over the road and require our police to drive you downtown. Um, and again, I, I've realized it's, it's a loaded question, and there's, there's a lot going on with that. But I would just like to, again, we, we have to balance a lot of things here, and, and it's a difficult task. But, uh, Alderman Gregory, I, I applaud you for bringing these issues up and for doing so in such, again, a polite and respectful manner for everyone on this council. We know that you're coming at this with, with the best intentions. And I look forward to hearing more about how we're going to resolve some of these issues. Um, Alderman Turner, I thank you for reminding us that we all need to speak up because we do. We need to have a united voice in this. And thank you.
Okay. So, uh, the mayor, the chief, I'll give you guys the last word here, and then we'll move on to any other topic or next, next item.
Well, the Chief can speak about enforcement. But again, um, I'll take the last comment being made with Alderman Conley. The reason that you'd wanted them in the street is because, to my understanding, they weren't wearing face masks. They could care less about infecting others. And so that's why you don't want necessarily dispersing them to the side areas, uh, coming in contact with others. So, but the Chief can, uh, speak to that. With regards to the parks, of course, that's by the Springfield Park District. The Chief can speak to the enforcement there. I think, I don't know if we respond or if, uh, they respond first, the park district police. Uh, the other ones, the Curve Inn, that's in the county. And I know there's times we do respond. But, um, again, a, a lot of these activities are complaint-driven. If the Curve Inn's open, I mean, that's, uh, that's a county issue. And I think Chief Reine, he's on here. I asked him to convene a meeting with the Public Health, uh, the state's attorney, Dan Wright. And because we are not getting the backing of the Public Health Department with regards to enforcement, I think that's a big issue. I had a conversation with the state of Illinois today. Uh, we know the fox run. They're, uh, throwing it in our face when you have a restaurant opening up. And we've listened to the older men and women of this council. That's why we took action. We appreciate it. That's why we came up with, uh, we were the first ones to actually, uh, pu- put forward the face mask concept in the stores. I mean, recommended. We took a lot of backlash over it. We were being proactive, looking ahead. The O V N is the, uh, way that we do enforcement that we can do. Uh, but again, that goes through the legal process. And we all know this is a health pandemic. And so this is a little bit unique with regards to other complaints that we'd fielded on a regular basis. And again, you know, I, I say it day in and day out, but the police department, they have their hands full. But especially when they don't have the backing of the health departments that they should get, it's very distressing. And so they're doing the best they can, uh, with the Curve Inn. If they're in the county, they should, or they should be in the city. They're all surrounded by the city. I don't understand why they're not even in the city. But if they have activities going on, they should be shut down. They should, uh, uh, take a look at their liquor license. Uh, so those are the, uh, decisions that will have to be made because the ones that opened up, you're talking, um, and I know I'm going off a little bit, but this goes back to the fairness issue that Alderman Turner brought up. I agree. If you're, if you, you know, if someone's going to a house and saying, family members are in there and you're, you're shooing them out, that's not right. I, you know, I come from a large family. We're, I, so, you know, we're, we haven't come together. But, you know, it's, it's, this is a challenging, um, you know, time in our lives that we need to use common sense. And so, uh, when we move forward with- And so when we move forward with regards to the entities that opened up, you know, or anybody that's putting others at jeopardy, you really have to think about what you're doing. It's not your individual freedom, it's what you're doing to other people, and that's really the crux of it. You know, I watched what happened in Missouri, and you have a young person on there, and they're saying, "Well, you know, if you don't want to come out, don't come out." No, the issue is, you come out, you get one person infected, or you infect however many, they go home, and it just shows the dispersment throughout our community. So we won't hear about it today, we might not hear about it for a week or a month, but this October, November, December, January, we will pray that we don't hear of the activities that happened this summer. And I know one of the things we're going to lead into is the opening up the restaurants and the bars. I have great concern with regards to the bars opening up. You know, people say, "Well, Mayor, you went to the bar on St. Patty's Day." Yes, I did. And so that's to show support, but what's concerning as we move forward is people having a consistent understanding of what's expected. And what is expected is that you keep your six-foot distance from others, you wear your face mask if you're getting in close proximity of others, covering up your nose and your mouth, and the reason for that is so you don't infect other people. It's not for yourself, it's for others, and then keep your good hygiene. But with the bars, and I've had this conversation with a couple people, is that this is driven, or how we're approaching it, so everybody knows, it's based on the number of seats, it's the capacity of the outdoor seating. So you should have a seat, I'm not concerned about the restaurants because you're going there to eat, so you'll have a seat to eat, or, you know, maybe a stand-up or a high-top table, that's the same with the bars. You're not going to go there to mingle with others. You know, you go with your party of six, and you stay at your area, but it's not to start mingling with people in the crowd. And so that's a real concern I have, is, but we have to pound that message home as much as possible. I'm sure the police department will still be in a difficult situation of enforcement, especially not, in my opinion, not having the proper backing that they should have, but that's what we'll continue to, you know, move towards. But in going with Alderman Gregory, what he brought up tonight, that's the challenge with all of us, and this has been going on since Lincoln's Day, is how do we improve race relations, move in that direction, and we have the pandemic thrown in the middle of this, and, you know, it's all about everybody's rights, and that, well, we're seeing that play out in front of us, and how do we come together and work through these items? So with regards to, one thing you brought up, and I know Chief Winslow, and he can speak to this, is usually you do bring, we do bring people together and have those discussions and how we can address the issue at hand, because two things, if it's a perception, we need to change that perception, but if it's a reality, then we need to change that reality. And so that's what we need to get to the heart of with regards to that. So Chief, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but the enforcement side of it, especially on the Park District or the Curve Inn, I know those are tough situations, but I don't know how that is handled, if we can just move in and, you know, take the call and move in, or if you have to wait for them to take the lead.
Well, we have a cooperative relationship with the Park District Police Department, they're the primary jurisdiction, but we do assist them when they ask us to, or if they happen to be off, they don't have 24/7 coverage, we'll help out and assist them as well as during that time period. You know, as far as the Curve Inn, like you said, that is in Southern View jurisdiction, that is not in the Springfield Police Department jurisdiction. I think there's a lot of misconfusion out there and misinformation out there. A lot of people think that wearing a mask and, or not wearing a mask, or not social distancing is a crime, and there is no restable offense for that. You know, we've done a great job as our officers as far as, you know, trying to gain compliance and education, and that's what most people have done. We've written zero citations so far to any business or to any people. Any, so, everybody that we've had the calls on, we went and broken up parties, and we've moved them along or whatever, we haven't issued any citations. We understand that our officers are using extreme patience with people, understanding that, you know, people are stressed, people are under a lot of pressure right now because of everything that's going on. But, you know, these block parties, these are the same things we've had for years, we'll continue to deal with them, I'm more than happy to discuss them. You know, as far as the protests or the walk from the Capitol Center, or the BOS Center to the Capitol, that was a decision made by the detail supervisor, who I trust to make sound decisions without micromanaging him. He made a decision based on what he had at hand, he dealt with it, and he made a decision that did it, and it worked out. And that's kind of what we do, is we empower our people to make sound decisions, especially our lieutenants who are in charge of our mobile field force teams. So they made a decision, and they went with it. Again, you know, we're here to help, you know. I understand this is stressful times for everybody, but the police department is the one thrown in the middle, and we're walking a tightrope here between whether or not this executive order is going to end up being ruled unconstitutional, whether or not it's going to be ruled constitutional, and we can do enforcement, we can't do enforcement. You know, I have a state's attorney that we have a great working relationship, but he's been forthright with us, "I'm not going to enforce technical violations of the executive order." So our hands are kind of tied here, you know, and that's why we went the compliance route and the education route throughout all of this, and we'll continue to do that. And again, like I said earlier, we've written absolutely nobody, nobody a violation, you know, and I think our guys do use good common sense, and I'm not familiar with anybody going on Easter Sunday, and if we got called, I'm sure we probably did go out, but again, I'm sure they used good discretion because we didn't write any citations over it, you know, and I'll be more than happy to look into that further, you know, after the call. But again, you know, our guys are doing the best they can, and they're walking that same tightrope right now.
Well, thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
One thing, I will just say this, Mayor, regarding restaurants and businesses opening up, it's frustrating to me when I go out to a big-box store to pick something up, and you literally cannot get a parking space in there, but I can't go and sit down at a restaurant and have a meal with my wife and son. You know, I got better chance of catching it at one of the big-box stores that's packed every weekend, and, you know, somebody said, "Hey, the biggest joke is, you want to have a graduation, have it at a big-box store and just have them announce the names over the loudspeaker, because then at least you'll be able to do it." You know, we've got people that couldn't even have graduations, but they can go to a big-box store and do whatever they want, walk around there for a couple hours if they wanted to. You know, to me, what's the difference of walking around there with a mask, or walking around, or going to church, or someplace like that? What's the difference? Because I don't see it. And, you know, but that's just my sermon for the day, and I think we need to, in the interest of time, let's move on to, we got citizens to address.
Well, one announcement?
Yeah.
Yep. The announcement is, we do have Facebook Live, and Alderman Hanauer, Alderman Donlin will be there, and the focus will be on businesses and the challenges like you brought up with regards to that. The one thing is, with regards to the big-box stores, I'm in agreement with you, I want lower-capacity opened up now for restaurants up to a 30% level in June, rather than going from 0% to 50% in July, because you can measure that metric and, you know, move accordingly. That way, if you see a spike, you can hold it at 30%, because if you jump up to 50%, you start seeing the spike then, you have a more severe problem on your hands, but then if you don't see any spike up or the metrics, then you can double it in July. But with regards to the big-box, you know, that was a essential service. The one thing nobody can argue is, the process the governor's put in place has worked. It has worked, the spread has slowed down significantly, it didn't spike up like everybody predicted, so from that standpoint, but we all want our brick-and-mortars opened up sooner rather than later, and we're getting there, we just need to make sure that everybody adheres to responsibility, and that's the same whether you're at a big-box, or if you're outside, or if you're someone's house, that's really what we need to do, is be cognizant of one another. And again, going back to the face coverings, is to wear them because it's for the person that you're visiting with. It's not necessarily for you, it's for the other people that you come in contact with. So if you show that common courtesy, we would appreciate it. But we look forward to Alderman Hanauer and Alderman Donlin and the two guests, I think it's Mike Coffey from the Saputos, I think, and Matt Noonan from Noonan's, True Valley, is that correct?
Papa Franks out on, out here, and then from Noonan's, who's also in Ward 10 as well, I might add, so that'll be a good perspective. So, all right.
That's Noonan Wednesday.
Citizens to address, Mr. Clerk, who do we have signed up?
We have John from Godfather's Pizza.
All right, make sure we got, can set the clock for five minutes, is he on? John?
Let me look.
Tom, is he on?
Chair, I do not have him logged in.
Okay, let's go with, who's the next person?
Mary Frances.
Okay, is, I see her name on here.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you've got five minutes, Mary Frances.
Okay, thank you. Is Corporation Counsel there?
Please direct your comments to the Chair, please.
Yes, is Corporation Counsel there?
Yep.
He's in, he's in the chamber, yes.
Okay, I have a question for him, could you give us a legal update on Pillsbury?
It's, Mary, you're Corporate Counsel? Yeah, just very briefly, very briefly, the state action is still proceeding, the injunction's still in place, there was a motion that was filed by the property owners trying to modify the injunction, that's currently in court, our motion to intervene is pending, the property owners are objecting to that motion.
Okay, when do you anticipate that anything will happen?
Well, I think that the court right now is not allowing, not providing for court hearings that, in the same process as the federal court, the state court isn't. So where there was a, just again, very briefly, there was a status hearing just in the last few days, the discussion was, occurred about the issue about the city intervening, the property owner indicated they objected to that and wanted to file a brief and certain motions in opposition to it. So those will be heard sometime in late June or July, we're not sure of the exact date.
Okay, and where does the super fund designation stand?
Still with the federal EPA.
So I thought the Illinois EPA had to do that.
No, the Illinois EPA wrote a report, you may recall, we discussed that some months ago, they forwarded that report to the federal, the US EPA, I'm sorry, and that is, my understanding is now under review.
Okay. All right, so Mayor Langfelder, since November, six months ago, I've been trying to get a, an ordinance to create a Pillsbury Mills Advisory Council, and I gave a talk before the council in November, and I, that was one of the asks I had for you, and I still want that, I still think that we need it. I think Springfield, city government, and the community have been grappling with this issue for over 20 years. There was a mini charrette that didn't go anywhere, the Pillsbury Neighborhood Association, they haven't been successful. We have a community group now, and I'm not sure they've accomplished anything significant. So I think it would help to have a city advisory council to legitimize the issue and, you know, make recommendations to you, to, you know, keep it in front of you, and I actually wrote an ordinance, I think you've seen it, and I believe Alderman Turner is not against it, the plant is in her ward, and Alderman McMenamin, I think, would be willing to co-sponsor it.
Correction, just point of order, I never said that, I said I'd consider it if the home alderman was interested in it, so I just want to clarify, I was very cautious about your approach.
So, I think you do have some support on the council?
Nope. Nope.
I said some support.
No, Doris, you did.
Anyway, just, just let me. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not actually done yet.
Okay.
Okay. So, I think it would be a good idea to bring more people together to talk about this on a consistent, regular basis, and just keep it before the city, because it is a city problem. And I'd like to know if you would consider sponsoring the ordinance.
Mayor, is that directed to the Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, you want to respond?
With regards, sorry. With regards to the request, I think, actually, the, I thought the Pillsbury Group's been doing a great job moving the ball forward, I think it's shown progress over this time, I think there's improved communication with regards to US EPA and the state EPA and moving that direction. So from that standpoint, you know, if Alderman Turner's interested, we can move towards that, but really what it comes down to is our ability to secure funding, and the best way to do it is not with an advisory committee, the best way to do it is with a community group that's activated, and I think that's where, you alluded to the charrette, I think that's where that, originally how that all was started, but the information I've read, it wants that public-private partnership where you have, you know, you have governments, different levels of government. I think the, what helps with regards to the Pillsbury Moving Forward Group is that you have, you have the ear of many different elected officials. If you make it a, an advisory group of the city, then it takes on almost, in my own opinion, you know, Alderman Turner might feel differently, but my opinion, I think it takes on the onus, kind of a, you know, here's another city committee trying to do something, as opposed to that real ground-level show of support that's been really moving the initiative forward, and that's through the Pillsbury Moving Forward Group.
Right, and I agree with you on that, but having an advisory council doesn't preclude the community group, I mean, you can have both of those at the same time with different functions, so I think they're both important, so that's why I want you to consider it.
Okay, Doris?
Yeah, so, so on this issue, I do agree with, I agree with the Mayor, and I, Mary Frances and I had email conversations over the weekend, and I told her that I thought through Chris Richmond's dynamic leadership, the Moving Pillsbury Forward Group had done a lot of work on this issue, I thought that they have brought a significant amount of attention to the problems and concerns related not only to the site, but to the neighborhood, and provided some very tangible relief to the residents. And I also think that they have a reasonable plan to move the project forward. I had a long conversation with several of them over last week, and I think that there is a very tangible plan to move the, move it, the project forward, and I just don't think that right now is the time to interject a governmental advisory council. I know that, you know, sometimes when you have community groups that come together, and then there'd be, and there becomes some dissension within the ranks, then, you know, it's logical that people will want to, you know, go off and do something different to maybe feel like that's the best way to move things forward, but in this instance, I think the Moving Pillsbury Forward Group has done a good job in it, and I think that they're headed in the right direction, and I think that we should give them an opportunity to work their plan.
Okay, so, but their plan is not compatible with what the Mayor is pursuing, they do not agree with trying to get super fund designation.
Mr. Chairman, the time is up for this lady.
Mary, Mary, hold on, just let me, okay, just let me say, let me say this.
They don't want the.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Mary Frances, your time's up, first of all, your time's up, but Doris.
Yeah, and I think that it's important, it's important to note that Mary Frances started out as a very integral part of this group, she has not been, she is no longer part of that group, and has not been for a while, so I don't think it's fair for her to speak on what the group is planning and how they're moving forward. I think that, I don't think that we can rely on her interpretation of that. And, once again, I have been in close communication with members, leadership of that group, I've been in close communication with an attorney that they have brought on to assist them with the project, and I've had, and we have had conversations with city staff, and so I, again, as a, as someone who is knowledgeable about the plan and the process that they're looking at, I think that we should allow, allow it, that, their plan that that group has to move forward and see how it works itself out.
Okay, Mayor, what kind of? Okay, Mayor, what kind of...
That's it. Thank you, Mary Frances. All right, did John ever show up?
Mr. Che, is John on?
He, he sent a text to me telling you thanks, anyway.
Okay, okay, with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So I'll move.
Second.
All right, see you next week.
All right, guys.
Thanks, all.
Bye.